Yes.
How the meeting is ordered?
Okay. Uh huh. Uh, moved by Councilor Hoover, seconded by Councilor Maguire, that the meeting be opened with Mayor Reed presiding in the chair.
Although the mayor. It's by Councilor Hoover and then by Councilor Maguire, that the meeting be open with Mayor Reed presiding in the chair. Oh, okay. Yeah, you can. Do we have a motion to adjourn or no?
No.
Okay. We would like to begin by acknowledging that we are gathered on the traditional lands of the Three Fires Confederacy, the Ojibwe, Odawat, and Pawatni peoples of Mendy Minzing. We recognize and deeply appreciate the stewardship and historic connection to this place, and recognize that we must do more to learn about its rich history so that we will better understand our role as residents, neighbors, partners, and caretakers. And I remind you, if you have a junior interest, you may declare it now or at the time of arrival. Okay, uh, basically the only thing on it is continued budget deliberations. And I'm just gonna ask Deb to walk us through what she's done, what she's changed here for us.
So I took some suggestions during my last meeting. Um, the first thing I did was I changed the, um, what used to be the tax budget, so the recreation now, and put it at six to six thousand. Uh, production twenty-two. Everything else, I mean, the capital. I live in the website. I'd like to reserve retainments. Highway signs. Acquisition of property under the landfill. Next, that's expenses, and then I offset the, uh, property acquisition by reserve withdrawals. And what I put on, like, that's just a suggestion. So if you want to change where I took it, that's totally up to you. So half of the working funds and half of the unallocated.
And that was just for the property acquisition? Okay.
Yes.
So that's where the extra amount came from?
Yeah.
The other two?
I looked, uh, I hope we could take it out of the gas tax, we had sent in deferred, but it's not an ongoing expense for for the property acquisition, isn't it?
Okay.
So.
Yeah, there's a difference. You did one seventy-five from unallocated and one seventy-five from working funds.
Yeah.
Which is three fifty, but in the public work capital, which got three fifty-five, where's the other five thousand?
That's two separate things. The three fifty-five is for the truck.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that just came out of public works.
One of the new pages.
Those changes.
So one eleven is the, um, capital cost.
Yeah, the allocations won't come out to that if the acquisition of property.
Is there, just any curious, is there a reason why you would do half and half instead of, um, the majority from the unallocated?
Just so I didn't draw them both down to nothing. And like I said, that's just how, if you want to change it, that's easily up to you.
What about the highway signs? Um, Jen, you've, you've got around seven, but we don't have, like.
We don't have definite numbers, no.
Right.
Um, but just because I tried to place billboards for myself recently. So I know that the top of the line would be about thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. And about that size?
About that size.
Okay, and if we should change that to ten.
I, I think if you have ten and we use seven, and then we have a little leftover, then we could look at maybe doing a couple of signs that need to be redone or taken down, or perhaps, um, this will aren't the extra.
One that'll hold your branding.
That's what I'm wondering. We should just change that to brand and turn it to ten instead of seven.
If we have some resources available, move it to ten.
Well, I don't think an extra three at this point is going to make a huge difference.
For two signs?
Seven for two signs.
That's, that's close. I just did one as well on Highway seventeen, and it was a little bit higher than that. Or, or, uh, wasn't half that, wasn't thirty-five hundred.
Okay.
And it's a reflective sign too, by the way. You should note that. We should, whatever we do, we should make them reflective. So when you don't have to illuminate them. People drive by at night.
Mm-hmm.
They, they pop. And so people are able to read them at night. That's important. You should make.
Did that include your sign spot or just the billboard itself?
Just the billboard, because I've had this spot for years.
Yeah, and I think it depends on who you work with.
Yep.
But thirty-five hundred was the top price I got for the top line. It did not account for one.
There was, I think, we're talking about two signs, but really we have four that need to be addressed. Two from that, one in and one on each side. Towns itself. And if we're going through the rebranding, then all four signs should be changed to follow in sync with our branding.
Yes, and you're referring to the signs right at the edge by the airport?
Yes.
So there's actually four of those, I believe. There's the two on the highway, and then there's one in the slash. And then there's one on Edwell to demarcate our, our boundaries. There's one in the slash right at, uh, the corner where you go down Church Street.
Mm-hmm.
So, but those ones are fairly new. We do need to rebrand, but they're fairly new. They're still in good shape.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't see the urgency to replace them the way I do the big signs. They need to be done.
Can we request an update, an EDO on our branding and at one of our next council meetings?
Yep.
Yes, because we haven't had a step ahead.
It would be nice to know where, where we're at, that before we start.
Well, we passed, we passed a branding policy, right?
True.
And she's just been looking at that, and she's had no money to do anything with it, so.
But you have an approach for any year.
No.
So let's start moving. It's been two years. Let's move forward with it.
Okay. Yep. So you want to leave that at seven?
That would cover two signs.
That will cover two ways. And I think at this point, that's.
Yeah, they're the two key ones on, on the main.
They are the two biggest ones. Okay.
Plus, they might be applicable to a venue if we get lucky to, that's, you know, new budgets come available.
Right.
Something that we should, we should keep in our mind.
Think. Just making, I think, instead of just saying highway signs, I'm wondering if you should just reclassify that as branding.
Do I make it ten thousand and just call it branding across? And we'll use it for highway signs or?
That's what I would prefer to do, but it's just, I'd like to call it branding so that it goes forward next year, like it kind of gets picked up. And then if we do get any kind of grant, it can, it can be topped up into reserves, like if we don't use it like right, we probably will if we get
Yeah.
get any capital money. But, um, yeah, I would like to call that branding.
That's perfect.
That sounds good. Just making sure that everybody's on board. See, but we are going to act on getting those signs done as quickly as possible and hopefully before they completely fall apart and tourists are coming and our signs are terrible.
While we can get working on it as soon as we get a budget pad.
Perfect.
So we're changing that to ten then?
Yes.
I don't think there was anything else that we had mentioned that didn't get picked up.
Well, we talked about certain roads, but
Yeah.
as it's Tuesday, it was at the dump road today, and I honestly think that section of road is probably our worst road and probably the most traveled. So I think that needs to be looked at for a priority too. Everybody goes to the dump. Even if it's just from the highway to the dump, I, I don't know what it's like past.
That road is, um, national, so it would mean tearing it up and putting down a double lift of hardtop.
Yeah, I'm just saying it needs to be on the list for looking at.
We'll add that too, then.
And also, where's our garbage compactor? What's happening with it? Because that's going to save a lot of the landfills. We can keep compacting.
I think, I understand this good. The green garbage truck, right? That's what you're talking about?
Not the green dump truck, but the orange compactor.
Is it orange? Oh, okay.
It's a lovely shade of dirt.
Yeah, okay.
My understanding is the, uh, the public works thinks they can get it running again. Um, they're waiting on, I don't know what kind of hoes, but they're waiting on two horses.
Okay.
So I would hope to know what council, whether or not it's, it's salvageable. It's not going to save us a lot. Um, it'll save us in terms of operating the site, but once it goes onto the pile, it just expands again anyway. We, um, our compaction comes from actually compacting. Well. With our garbage into a cell, like, meaning that where if it goes in compact and it stays compact, ours is, uh,
The must-savor hit at Rome.
Thought that was the whole benefit that was sold to us, that this was saving us so much space.
I think it saves us in terms of operating the landfill, because the more you give it and compact it, the fewer trips it has to make.
So you certainly wouldn't consider placing it, or suggest, no, or recommend?
No, no, I wouldn't. Um, I wouldn't suggest that if we get to that point, do we ask an engineer, our engineer for his comments on it? Yeah. With our type of landfill, I don't see the, I don't see investing in a new piece of equipment like that. I think a compactor would be much, much better in the long, like a, um, shepher, those, the grinding.
The shredding.
Shredding, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
If everybody knows. Yeah. Yeah. Um. So was there anything else that you want changed?
So where are we with the agenda for the website? It was supposed to be in the last meeting.
Please me too.
Sure.
Uh, we have several proposals. We're just in the review, uh, stage right now. They pretty much all are within that twenty-five thousand range.
So I see Billings has come out with, uh, on what is called a town app, and you can download the app and click on Billings. Um, I would like to also see you entertain that and see what kind of pricing it entails, because all the information from the website would basically be on the app. So we might be able to continue to run our current website in the state that it's in, as well as transitioning to an app for your phone that may save us some of the money with the, with twenty-five thousand. Anyway, that app is up and running, and, uh, it's called Town App. You just have to enter the, you know, it's, it's nice because it's updatable and, you know, what were they mean? Things you find in any reports you need to put in, like any points of looking into me, all your, um, budget stuff there by law too. So check it out. It might be a valuable asset to us instead of spending the full point of a thousand dollars right now on a full new website.
Wonder how much that costs.
If you're looking.
Yeah, because well, I suppose we, maybe if we had something like that, we could maybe run with our, with our other website for a while, but it's really, really old.
It is very old.
Yeah.
Still adequate, and you can still search on it, and it's still meeting the general requirements.
Hmm.
We can help with the app. Then maybe we won't necessarily have to spend the full amount of money to develop a full brand new website.
Great, I can check out that app. That sounds interesting. It's Billings, you said. Yeah. Okay.
And Billings just introduced it?
I was just beginning to wear it. So I think it's in the same thing. There are just a couple of pictures. There's photo gallery. They can upload pictures and stuff to it, so.
Probably.
I don't know anything else.
Yeah, I'm just thinking for a cost, then we could probably find out pretty quickly from Billings approximately.
Worth investing in.
Mm-hmm. See what they use.
Sure.
Okay. Um, other. Um, other questions or comments on this?
I would still like to see the reference in budget lower even lower, but. I think we went down to fifty, there's another savings of sixteen thousand. New person in lower budget might might be able to do just that much.
Maybe the chip away of that budget anymore until we couldn't understand exactly what the person's capable of. We'll have a better understanding of how much money is left in that budget. How much hasn't been used, and then we can do a comparison here, so. So we've already put twenty-one, twenty-one five out of that budget. Not out, maybe we could suggest it for this year. So I would like to keep it at that moving forward for this year.
I'm I'm going to, quite frankly, because it, a lot of our our. Things that happen, the cooking classes, different groups and stuff. They pay to go, so I'm not, I'm I don't understand why the budget is so high when people are paying. To go and. To me, one should offset the other.
On the revenue side, revenue is recorded, so.
Yeah, so it's if it's a facilitated event, and people are paying, it should cover the cost of. Shut the, whatever I realized is five o'clock, second o'clock. Um, so that's, like I said, I'm on the fence, I I do understand and agree, we've already taken a chunk out of there. But I also think that we need to maybe live within our means and. And maybe to want it down.
Thank you, there's a piece for you for the branding.
I am too. And we'll see what this year brings.
Exactly, we can make amendments down by the nature.
Yeah, I don't want to start cutting programming to kids and seniors and even adults.
I'm not talking.
No, I know.
But it's.
But what if that happened?
But if they're pay, like if they're paying for it. And we are facilitating it, that they are paying for it, it's. Obviously, there's going to be some cost offset. If we are dropping to fifty thousand, some of the costs would be still offset. They wouldn't be paying the phone out like you would pay for a a lesson or that sort of thing, but. It's like a subsidized event rather than.
That's exactly what it is. Most of our programs are portioned rather subsidized by this. Because we, we mount, everything happens if people are paying too much to attend them, they don't come out, you don't get the benefit of it, it's involved. And like I said, I've always been a firm supporter in getting the points out of how he's established. Just for the mental health and the interactions with the seniors is just as important, so. It's it, I think if we kept it the same this year, and we can work with all the new persons to see if we can cut costs for next year. But I think it's. And the the possibility of trying to cut it now before we. Know where we're going to be, it's going to be a detriment to the program, and it's 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 a well-recognized program on the island, lots of people. Do attend it from our own communities, and I think we should support it.
So is it on page ninety-six then?
Right, we just did this, yeah.
So sundry was what is brought in by the different programs, right? Yeah, so that's what that.
That actually costs, I think eleven is thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
Change, yeah.
Yeah.
So that whole program is costing us thirteen thousand, that's true.
When you take into account both the revenue, all the revenues that come in against expenses that cost. The tax care thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that whole program is bringing up to thirteen thousand dollars. So I think that's that's important to note, that we're not actually spending sixty-six thousand dollars on it.
Not at.
It's thirteen.
Eleven, right, yeah. That's why I'm content to leave it at the sixteen six. Anything else? Have a chance to go through them?
Where is the money from the water at the vote, their votes department, get allocated on budget?
At Angel Water Budget, for man twenty.
Does it go in as a separate line item or is it just? So we should be able to see how much money that goes in here over the last year?
Yeah.
Seventy-four. Misleading its revenue. At average, it's two fifty-five hundred sixty-nine hundred, depending on the year.
Under what that, sorry, miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous revenue and sequestration in brackets.
And that's all that's in them?
That's all that's in there.
Is the water um up to date, like, I know when we, when we set the rate, have we changed the rate? For getting water up there? No, never, eh?
It was two dollars.
Yeah. We just want to do, we didn't look at the cost of of producing water, eh? No, we haven't looked at that for a while.
You could probably increase that to a terminal question, I I think, but.
For people, I think we should leave it this year, but I think that's something we should look at is the costing of the. The cost of producing water, because we don't want to charge more than what it costed to produce it.
And we need to find out all sorts of machines capable of changing, if it could be a set.
Yeah.
Quite operate system.
Yeah.
But it looks like at least generating enough money to offset the costs of the use of, or purchase of the unit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, paid for itself several times over.
Yeah, a lot of people use that.
We spent a pretty, pretty broken down for a while, got somewhere, I think that's four.
Yeah. That last, or the year before, I'm not sure. Yeah, it was well-used anyway. Okay, so. We're not putting any money away this year, but we're making the payments back to reserves that we said we would, so. We don't make any payments for the cloud, but.
We're not making.
We start, we start this year, I don't know.
We haven't made any payments, no.
This budget starts.
No, no, I haven't. For next year. For next year.
Next year.
Revisional plan started this year, but when the draft doesn't get out of place. And two of the BMO loans are done in twenty twenty-seven, correct? None of the BMO loans are done that soon. Or law, two of the loans are done in two years though, or no? Not BMO loans. Okay. But for the horse main, we borrow from ourselves, like from our reserves. Okay. So that's done in twenty twenty-seven. And one other one, isn't it? Horse main and.
The Brian pump?
Brian pump. No?
That's a reserve.
That's just a number reserve. Okay.
And we did, we did add money to that this year, like we have, yeah, yeah.
So I have a question, who has the opportunity, uh, open, but. I don't understand why. I understand the need for reserves, I don't understand unallocated cap, I don't understand keeping the money. Just in case when we have things that are desperately needing to be done. When there's no actual place for it to go. So if somebody could explain to me. When we know things desperately need to be done, and we have money sitting here, why are we keeping the money for a rainy day when we got, we're at a rainy day? Explain that just so that.
And that's why I took part of the money out of there for.
If it's raining, we're going to show them the day we're going to. Okay, so and that's, that was my biggest question, when you're looking at all these reserves, it's great to have money in reserves, and I certainly think that we need to have that. But some of these items that we've talked about, um, you know, like I brought up the roller mill siding, desperately needs to be done. Cannot keep moving it as it is and hoping that we're going to get grants, we're going to, we need to fix it. So why would we sit here with money in different accounts? That's not going anywhere, isn't allocated for something. And say, oh, we have this thing desperately needs to be done, but we're going to hold on to this money and wait for that to fall to complete total overfilling.
Okay, so unallocated capital. Um, like Deb said, she has taken some of it out of there, the amount that's left in there wouldn't reside the mill?
I'm I'm not suggesting we reside it, because there's a big plan hopefully in place. I'm suggesting to just at least take off the part the siding it's falling on. And even if it's left as is, fix the holes in the side and leave it as is, at least it's not flapping in the wind. And flying into the water. Which has been a big concern for several years and and we're all just waiting for something to happen, but it's not happening, so we need to act on something. And that's why I'm saying I don't, for me. I'm having unallocated capital, I'm saying, okay, so even after we take out the one seventy-five. That still needs a fair chunk of money, that we could take some of that money and actually fix something. So if if I I just don't understand why you wouldn't.
And to add to that, we could maybe out, unallocated, what about the Maston House? Have we got any update on it or tearing it down, like? I mean, Nora was a safety issue, but that Maston House, I think, is more of a safety issue and. To Jen, we have money sitting in.
It's not ours. Like the Maston House, it's not ours, so. It's not really much we can do about it until the lawyer gives us. The go-ahead to to move on it, even at that point, it's still not ours. Even it has orders against it, like.
Isn't that something that should be discussed in the camera?
Yes, yes, sorry.
As far as the roller mills, uh, I know we have some talk on, where are we at with the committee meeting? The last committee you had, from there to decide what you were going to do with it.
Well, we we brought it to council.
Yeah.
Council, okay, that we moved forward with it, I haven't heard anything back from the engineer, because he was supposed to be doing um. Like a sites visit, like site operations or whatever.
And you're supposed to visit with the user groups, that was all supposed to be announced about?
The user groups?
He did that, he did not.
The building has been identified as a virus, we want to treat the plant.
Right.
So ag- agreed, we need to do something with it. So we're stuck in a catch twenty-two, it's, you spend money to fix it, to make it look nice. It's not going to be a move to head through a project for development, so. I don't want to see you fix it or do any extra work to it, without having a plan.
Were we not supposed to receive a final report?
He he got the go-ahead to take soil samples and and that type of thing down there and then look at the elevation, I believe. I haven't heard anything back since then, and then Winter said, I can't remember when our last meeting with him was. When were you there, Rob?
Last September, I'm going to guess.
That's what I thought, something like that. I'll get, we'll get ahold of them.
We do need to have a response to.
Yeah.
To help us.
We'll see what he's doing.
And with regards to unallocated capital, yeah, the thing too is what we need to know is we need to establish our priorities, because we have.
Yes.
And so, so money can disappear very quickly.
Absolutely.
And that's where we have to be very cautious as we proceed in what what we do and where we allocate it while protecting our reserves.
Yes, but as I've said, for me, it's just a matter of, it's unallocated, so let's allocate it. So we know what what direction we're heading with it, because if we're sitting there with money that we don't know. But we have all these things that we need to work on, that's what I'm saying. And it's, it's not that I want to fix up the roller mills if this plan is in place already. It's that I want to keep it from falling to further ruin and we have no options. And that's the thing, we have to take care of what we have, what we build anything with. And it's just not getting taken, nothing's getting taken care of, we just keep putting it off. Hoping for something wonderful to happen, that's not happening, so we just have to deal with stuff.
Siding was put on because the building was taking on water and beginning to rot. So the siding has blown off in a couple of spots and on the back, I believe most of it's gone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the front side of the building is still good, so do you take it all off to match? Should take, or you're just patching it, is, you tear the siding off, you're going to have an unpainted wall now that's exposed to more moisture?
Actually, that siding, that vinyl siding is is uh covering up former wood siding. Which is still an exterior siding. So maybe there would be a way to remove that and do something to help seal the exterior wood siding that's on there that might be a. A cost effective, any issue approach, that's something we would look at.
But for the time being, it takes no such time to do. Pardon, you'd have to look at painting, that would probably be it. Now, I've talked to a lot of hours of labor involved to do that. So again, we're starting to spend a lot of money on the building.
Without plan, we need to plan first before we do anything, but but at the same time, I mean, I was down there a couple of weeks ago. And I know it's out, because somebody had broken some windows in that hole. I'm hoping that they've been repaired by by now, I know that the burn and morph was also intact as well, and that's been sealed up.
Yeah.
Those are the things we have to, and the other thing too is that. Our income, and the painting will be fine, so we have to make sure we're secure from.
Oh, yeah.
Those are, those are key things. There was rot on the road, and the road definitely need to be repaired, so if you're not taking in water. From water. The roof is secure.
I just, I think like if our priorities are that building, which. How about that building, but but are roads a bigger priority for us?
It's a thing of course, it's a company, that's why I say, that's why we have to be careful when we're talking about what we're doing. What we have, because we don't have enough on just going on.
That's right, and but that's what I'm saying, and I I don't disagree with you, the roads are obviously a huge priority. There are so many things that are a huge priority, and as I said, if we have money that has been saved for priorities, we've got them. And we have things that need to be done before they get worse.
I'm just thinking that if we um. If we get a price on it for to tear up the dump road, because I noticed it was really bad too. Then maybe that would be enough money to put a double lift, because I mean, we have to put a double lift on. On the dump road, if we if we tear up the pavement itself.
When, when, when you're saying.
I'm thinking a double lift of hardtop, they call it a double lift.
Put down two layers.
Of hardtop.
One tar.
Yeah, tar and chip, yeah. But would we do that this year, or would we leave the money there and use that money next year when we've got the guys coming anyway, when we'll get a better price? Because we get, the more we do, the better price we get, so to bring them in just to do one little section is expensive. More expensive.
Well, then I would say we wait till next year, but make sure it's a priority. And if they're coming next year and doing a bunch, then get the better quality pricing, that's absolutely, but in the meantime, we'll have to.
You're going to have to pass, yeah.
So I mean, we could go through this, we could spend the next twelve weeks going over every line item, ultimately. We need to come up with, like I said, eight point six is the suggested, that's.
Three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
At two hundred and fifty-five. Eight point six at thirty thousand.
It's right there on page five, eight point. Not page twelve, sorry.
Eight point seven, yeah.
Eight point seven, yeah.
Seven sixty-one thousand, so. Seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, so. I mean, and that's without doing anything capital. So again, do we have a list of anything we can sell off, any lots or anything, I mean. We're hanging on to stuff that could bring in revenue, that could lower that. Potential tax increase.
What does it spell, you know? I guess that would be the place to start. That doesn't have any strings attached or hasn't been owned or will be donated, that. Could be so.
Does that, I, I mean. I know we do have to do a tax increase, but eight point seven percent, I mean, people are.
It's a mental difficulties. It's in line where everybody else is.
Well, Mimi was three point five.
Yeah, but Nisi Mimi also had to do a lot of development, you know? So that's. It may, it may have been a lot more. But on average, they were close to seven this year.
The building just came in at six point five.
Back my head, did you check the number? Uh, the, the not division, but I want them looking at that. They agree, yes.
I know that it's only been a week, uh. Did anybody do any research on what I had suggested of taking in tax?
Yes, it turns out that it's not on vacant land, it's not vacant residential units only. And so Hamilton, Toronto. Isu. I have, I have the less, there's five municipalities that have entered into it, but it's only for vacant. Um, like it's, except for vacant residential units, and when you read through the regulation, all kinds of uh exemptions. It's designed to give those housing units. On the market, yeah.
Is it, and so there's no way that we can do that?
No, no.
Any kind of level of that?
No.
It's just an idea.
Yeah.
To get moving.
And a good one, but we don't have the.
I don't think we're anywhere close to deciding this tonight, we have some questions yet to be answered. So. Um, we can bring forward these. At our next meeting again. We get questions answered. Are there any other suggestions?
Yeah, just go back to the postage and the two dollars per statement, if we did.
We are looking at.
Okay.
Yes, I, that does sound like a logical thing. Two dollars for your water bill, two dollars for your tax bill, could be. If you want to spend it. A lot of corporations are going that way. And back when stamps were twenty-five cents, it didn't, wasn't a big deal, but cost is, what, a dollar? Twenty now?
Dollar twenty-four.
You know, sometimes you do paper on top of it.
Machines are a little bit less. Yeah, one twenty-three.
I thi- I think that'd be good to be able to start. We, we can custom do that stuff, it's, it's the way of the future, so let's start looking forward to it.
There's no problem, like going with that, sounds like a good idea, but I do think that we need to have. A good website, so that like anything that we need to get out to the people. You want it on more than just Facebook, you know what I mean, like? Because we always send out stuff in our tax bill.
But yes, but a lot of stuff that you're sending out, it has the tax bill, could all be put on the app calendar.
Yeah, if we get that.
Museum.
Yeah.
So it's all, even on the current website, I believe there's a, a possibility of having the calendar on there, is you not?
I never looked at Little Currents.
No, ours.
Oh, ours.
On their website, to have a calendar, like a lot of the stuff we're sending out is, is telephone numbers for services. And, and a list of what's going on for the summer, so. You, you know, that, that's all we're not doing. It's fairly static, it's not dynamic, it'll change every week. So I think. I think it's, I think it'll be a move in the right direction.
We'll take a look at that. Yeah, that sounds interesting.
Do you have an email for a quote, but I haven't heard of it yet, I guess. Move on until we.
What's that for?
For the email coupon that you're not.
Right. Right. Yeah, they'll have, find out what it costs to do it.
Because we have all these costs and it's hard to establish where you want to move things, but you're connected to, that's the big thing.
I also had a question from the, um. The quest from the ma- minor hockey executive. So all their stuff. Now, can any of that ISF money be used for what they're suggesting? Because they said wheelchair platform. But could that come out of the ISF ones?
Wasn't itemized in the ISF.
You have. That accessibility though, or, I, I, I don't know.
No.
No, okay.
And the accessibility one, I'm still, wait, but. Can't change the scope of, of what's already been applied for.
No, yes.
Second time we're going back to the master burning status.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
I just, to me, I see an accessibility, I thought. That one part of the ISF, but it's not, okay.
If we do get the extension for that, we'll have to move forward with that. Uh, with the addition of the doors and stuff. One of the problems we have in there is the exit from. This would have been tied into the engineer's report that we got. The exit from the ice surface side. Into the. Back end where the bathrooms and stuff are. It's not even legally a door, it's just like. A piece of plywood that slides open and closes, and it's got exit, but not.
Right.
So if we're doing some work with, through that grant, then we need to address those types of things at that end also, so.
One thing we haven't, oh, sorry.
That's okay, uh. You want to?
No, okay.
So and then under the public works, uh, we need a list of equipment, what's needed the most, like we've got the new plow truck coming in, maybe, I don't know, I'm starting to think it's not real, but. What's needed next, because now in backhoe's not in shape, the garbage compactor, we don't know, like what's the next piece of equipment, so that. We've got to have all these numbers before we think.
The last I talked to Steve was. Like we, we'd at least one more, if not two more snowplows in the next near future. And the backhoe's to the point where it's going to have. They need significant repairs or we replace it also. And I think he's looking for price, you know, going.
We still have an inoperative brand of the, of the, the brand center. And sometimes we'll be allocated ten thousand extra that never moved on.
Where, where did the backhoe?
Where did the ten thousand go?
Yeah, it was itemized.
It was, uh. It's in reserve, so it's still sitting in reserves.
It probably works. Yeah, because it's still sitting there.
Yeah, probably works, the, the capital works or the backhoe equipment?
So check my, one of the two of them, who could it be?
Yeah, we can maybe get a backhoe if we could. Use the money that's there and add maybe some money out of unallocated, depending on when it comes in.
Yeah, like we can talk here and say, well, we want to do this, but until we know a list of. What has to be done.
I think it's. Would you pretend it's last report and identify that it was at least a need for two half ton trucks as well? If you spend any time during the past day, you know that all of our equipment is very bad, should have been not expected to live long. So I think we're going to have a significant cost. At least part of it.
Do we get a price on the lease for that?
No.
No.
There's a lot of, that's the other thing, you know, recently, recently buying, we got significant expenses in mileage that need to be addressed.
I have that on there too, mileage. And under transportation services, under the grass cutting. So last year's budget was thirty thousand seven eighty, we came in at thirty-one thousand, but we're budgeting eighty-three, is that the new contract?
The new contract.
And what are, what all grass are they playing on?
It includes the cemetery in that tube, and it wasn't itemized to show me what's what, so right now it's all under public works.
I think that includes your cemetery.
Yeah, we'll have full cemetery after.
At just two hundred and seventy, I was like, what?
We paid you out there.
Uh, fifty-eight. Under expenditures, the grass cutting is the fourth one down.
Yes.
So that's the outside services on the next page, yeah, because it's the same amount.
Yeah.
Hey. So Marina, we're down, like we're at like twenty-one or thirty percent, what? How did we go down and then look again?
But it's showing in the budget as, as per the recommendation, that there's a memo in there as well.
From Justin?
Yeah.
So it's basically the stockage. So there's no staff, uh, staff costs there.
I'm kind of on the fence on that one too, but.
The concern as well.
That it's not staff down there?
Yeah, because I mean, we do have a, a, I have a Marina, as far as I'm concerned, the most amazing is. It's an asset to the community, you know, tourism, you know, actual, or fishing, I should say. You know, nobody down there working, there's nobody to provide fuel to people, which are coming in with their boats on good ones, for example. You know, you, you can't find fuel, it was Tom on a Saturday.
We didn't sell. Fuel on here, we didn't do, we didn't do something on those. I worked with Jackie for four years because I, I'm old into what she's suggesting in this. I'm not saying we don't have a Marina, I think we have a sufficient Marina. For what our demand is. And, and in, and with all due respect, we're not like Gorgay or, or Little Current or Kalani. The majority of the people who used our Marina in the past number of years have been local people, they want to destroy their local way. And I have no problem with, with hydro and water. Um, but it, it's costing us more to keep the fuel tanks down there than we ever sell in, in fuel. It, it, you know, we have that, we have to have that inspected every nearby TSSA there. Who likes the fact that it's as close to the water as it is? And all we're saying is, we might be able to pull a percent off the levy if we say yes, it's a seattle, it's a seattle arena. Um, we're going to rent this, the, the, the same road that's asked for it every year. But over the last two or three years, our locals haven't asked for fuel, they haven't asked for the pumpouts, so let's pull that stuff away and cut our costs.
Maybe on minimum, I, I still think that the, for example, on weekends, because that's where it probably gets the most use in summer time, well, they should be fueled. But otherwise, all we're going to do is drive people, vision community, is now we have none. And, and we should have something down there to, to provide for, for that segment of our.
Is there a way to make it more, um, even out instead of such a loss, like how much are our slips?
Well, if, if you want to raise the, um, the rates, ab- absolutely, but it's, we've always tried to stay. As we are a small community, we've tried to stay at the lower end of, of, um. Of what the rates on the island are, and we've tried to use that as, as a feature of attracting other people to, you know, to, to use our facility. But absolutely, and. User fees and rate increases are always a function. Do we have a line?
Yeah.
Down there lasting, this is what it costs us to maintain the death post.
So if you look at page sixty-one, it'll show you. That the Marina, um. Our fuel cost for five thousand and what we brought in in revenue was six thousand.
Don't forget that we're comparing Marina and just don't knock. Anyone in the community and stuff, you're going to compare it to things like the Arena as well, which is also a loss leader, and the library, for example, all these things as well, so these are important. Parts of our infrastructure that I think that we need to maintain. Even many communities probably wish that they could have an arena, right? We're, we're fortunate that we're sitting here on a beautiful lake site, that, that we can exploit. And maybe, I think maybe to our discredit, is over the years. We've allowed it to go into a state of degradation and we haven't been going as a destination. We have the largest natural deep water harbor on, on, this was actually the first shipping port on that, there's some history here. And there's some reasons to visit here, um. I, I, I don't think that we should lose Marina, per se, I think that we should do, maybe we can look at, as Altonan suggested, some room through services in order to get the cost cut. By the cost of setting the road. But I think that we do need to keep it open so that we can provide necessary, and we should look at ways maybe to store it, expand it. And to attract more people here. That way, maybe who, that would come from marketing for start. I used to, we used to market it as a service and rain, not one for them. But we did the same thing with the community, because once again, we don't have, you know, we don't have the restaurants in the community that we do, that sort of thing, so. I, I, I think we should look at things to improve it rather than to.
And the, the, the largest line item under that is materials and supplies, what would that include? A thousand dollars? Anything for repairing docks?
Docks, those showers.
Okay. What kind of condition is the shower housing?
I wouldn't recommend it.
It's pretty rough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very basic, and it's. Including anything compared to. Other moving shower houses.
Can you shower it Nick?
Yes.
Is our, like, does the laundry work?
Yes, because we replaced the washer. For last year or the year before.
Couple.
Yeah. I think you better double check that, it's the last that I heard, it's not, it did no laundry facilities there.
And it's coin operated, correct?
No.
No?
No. And that was one of the issues we had with the shower house as well. Keep the pole of shower.
And how often, um. I'm just, so I found an interesting quote today regarding marinas, uh, from someone's website, is that a good Marina should prioritize the maintenance and cleanliness of its facilities? And I think that's where we're falling short for whatever reason. Um, I know there are locals who use it, I think it's fabulous that we have it, I think we need to have it. But I also think that, like Rob said, we need to maybe. Work towards. Creating a nicer space out of it, we've got this beautiful sign in honor of Mark Hoving. Um, and I really think that we need to actually honor the space instead of just trying to, again, put off, put off, put off. But we need proper signage as well, indicating, hey, there's stores up at the top of this hill, there's things, they used to be a very busy place. And it's a very quiet place, I did search, uh, on the internet today, trying to find what people thought of our Marina, certainly we're not Gorgay with two hundred and twenty-one slips, but are we utilizing our slips in the best way possible? Um, certainly, uh, upper foot seems to be the norm, but, um. Is it just one boat per slip, how are we renting them out? And maybe we can just revamp how we're doing things. I think that having staff there at peak times is essential, I do think we need to offer pumpouts, it's a long bay to come all the way down and find out we have no fuel. And I think in the past few years, staff that we've had have told people that fuel is not available, have told people pumpout's not available, and word has spread that they're not available. When they actually are. And so boaters aren't coming down here because, well, why would they, they get stuck in the bay, there's no fuel, there's no pumpouts. Right, it's a long bay, and we need to, to make it appealing for people to come down. And make sure that the word is out that we do have gas here, we do have pumpouts, and we do have people willing to help you.
I do disagree with you, but does it justify a full-time staff member being known?
I, I didn't say full-time staff member, I said staff there at peak time. And that's what I'm saying, having a full-time staff member, um. As per the suggestion of, uh, our previous tech, having someone there that can be doing kind of double duty in other areas. And. Having a sign posted saying stuff, uh. Fridays from nine till whatever time or in the afternoons or whatever time is. Fridays from nine till whatever time or in the afternoons or whatever time is peak. Then people know when someone's going to be there to help them. We can advertise it as such. If we do have a student down there, which we have had before, they can be doing cleanup or whatever they do down there. But if somebody's looking for boat slips that through them, we have to advertise it and we have to make it accessible for people. The, um, and I do think, although we've had several committees that perhaps have become the club now. We haven't had one for the Marina. And I think that that would be nice to get the input from the people who actually utilize the space.
I have to say that I agree with it. Everything that Jennifer said on that topic right there.
Fine.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so.
Sorry, it's not my place to argue with council, so I'm, I'm saying this respectfully, respectfully. As I said, I've argued with the previous pack for a number of years. This was her recommendation this year. It's not working. I don't know what the exact number is, but I would throw a public risk of being embarrassed. But ninety, ninety-five percent of our users are local people. We're advertising to our community. About what's there. It's our, it's our community which does domestically thrives in our Marina. That, that's all I'm saying. So, so peak is different in everybody's mind in terms of, of, of hours. And that. Respectfully, I just don't see the numbers very now that we're gonna turn it around. And having said that, I'm shutting down.
Well, that's what I was just gonna ask. I was like, how would? When they are all local, how would we determine, especially this year? Like this year, we could determine, but. How would we know right now what the peak hours would be?
Could just set the hours and say gas and pumpouts are available these days, these hours. If they need it, they will be there during that day and that time. It's like the dump, roll up in Tuesdays and Saturdays.
Which is set sometimes.
Yeah.
And market the facility for what it has to offer. Because we don't do that. Boat used to do that. And we did that, we had more oak trout.
Under Marina, we have nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for riding lawnmower, but we're contracted our, all our grass cutting out. And buy a new lawnmower, riding lawnmower? Page or you want sixty-five?
We can say what page one every time we.
Sorry, sixty-five.
I believe was the recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not in there. Okay, okay. None of that is in there.
Because we do have a full time Marina, staff member who needs full time work. So.
Right.
So the intent, I think from this, what it is that he was to maintain the grassing down there at the Marina. So if he's there working. At least somebody needs gas, he's crap.
I think, yeah, but the grass cutting is all subcontracted out, right? So we don't have to worry about the grass cutting. But there's enough other work down there, maintaining the restrooms and, you know, all the other work that goes along with it. And set the hours. May, maybe it's same as the dump, Tuesdays and Saturdays, Tuesdays and Fridays. I don't know. But if I had a boat there and I knew it was only available to be pumped out on Tuesday and Friday, I'd make sure I was there, have it pumped out.
But nobody pumps it. Like, I think we had one pump out.
Because I give her three dollars. Very different people, they were told.
They couldn't get pumped out?
Yes.
Historically, we had students down there as well. So there were summer student grants that helps offset the cost of operating it as well. Maybe it's not so readily available currently, but once again, it's something to explore.
Two years ago, we had summer students down there, right? Because they ran the concession too.
Did we apply for summer students down there this year?
Could we move one to there if we get one? I don't know. Although our full time Marina person, I mean, he's year round, right?
Would be the person I would just, if you're setting. Peak, the nuts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I would recommend too.
Yeah.
Because he does a fabulous job maintaining the arena. I think he would be a huge asset to the Marina down there.
He will there, he will exactly that, very, um, service oriented.
I, I know one concern that has popped up is the fact that all of his running between the two buildings and possibly the hardware store. Are all classes in town and he doesn't pay.
No, that's not true.
Is he paying pilot?
Yes. Paid a payment last year.
Okay.
Yes.
So is it a lump sum payment or did he keep track of that?
I don't know whether he, he, he was told he could, but I don't think he ever did spit anything.
I copy did. I don't think the pack did.
Packed it, but I don't think he did. I'll have to double check.
Okay, but I, I'm sorry, I thought he had. Okay, the money's, we've always said, we honor.
Do you want to touch base with him on that shit?
Where are they?
Please.
What? So we're looking at using like the wages. That were going to be classified against the arena, but now they'd be like down here. So how much extra would it be to add those services in? Do you think, or do you need a time to figure that out?
Wages aren't gonna make a difference.
No, they're not. It's the same guy.
Other, yeah.
You can tell us next week if you want.
Yeah.
Yes, but I have them down in a couple days a week. We're still up for services. My biggest thing is the gas tank. If you're not getting used, it's stuff like they're gonna get pulled out, they're gonna pull them in. If they're ever pulled out, you're never gonna get permanent. I don't think.
Yeah.
And we have to be checked every year?
Yeah. And it's becoming harder to find the parts because they aren't new.
No.
And as, and as the pack says in here, the, the stuff that pumps is on a slot of light, so. And I have no.
So they just have to replace it if it's not being used.
It has to be explored. To determine what its life cycle is before we're making decisions.
Of course.
And the same thing applies to the cost. Like you say, we're getting re-certified every year. I mean. We're no different than any other big site community that, that offers fuel services. But we can, we can got lots of explore, options to explore.
Yeah.
I just think that we should be. Be set, focus on better utilization of it, better marketing of it, that sort of thing. So maybe we can improve our approach in the future. And it is a loss like the arena and like the live, you have to look at that.
I think we do have to look at the rates. Um, one thing that I was, because I was researching, obviously, um. I, I don't know the comparative rates, but I, it seems like quite, um, quite low to keep your boat there for the entire season. There's significant difference between keeping it there for one week at two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the whole season at forty dollars per week.
Something like.
The foot of the boat, yes. I calculate, I calculate that based on a third of that boat.
I think it's something like that, two dollars a foot. And then, then a higher cost as well, you know, I'd, I'd something to that.
Yes, well, that's what I just said. That's why I was looking at comparative rates. And to me, that's a huge difference between two hundred and twenty-five for a week and forty for a week. And I think it's awesome that people are using it, but we also need to remember that the hydro and water cost is. Quite high as well.
So let that's for comparable. Document so we can look at it the next time.
Sure. But have they already been rented for this year?
No.
Nothing's been rented yet. Okay.
They're there from May long into Thanksgiving, right? And I also think, um, I am not, I'm, I'm really the person that don't own a boat. Um, but are we using the slips to the best utilization of them? Are, are we putting? Like if you have a smaller boat, can you put two boats per slip?
Historically, our, our manager's always been very good about, um. Not putting a thirty foot boat in the hidden foot slab.
But am I renting a slip? Can I have a small boat with two, two deskeys in one slip? Or do I pay per foot? Or do I, can I rent for a boat and then just park my desk there?
You pay per foot.
So for two boats, you pay like, what's like you want?
Yes.
We also have to keep one slip, um, available because we're an emergency scene, full plane landing place. Um, and then we always, we don't always, um, but we try to keep a slip for tenants. For people, they end in emergency. But I would say ninety, ninety-five percent of ours are used and just local seasonal people.
And that's awesome.
Yep.
It's awesome. That our locals are able to use it. But if you're talking about marketing the Marina when it's ninety-five percent full and there's nowhere for anybody to come to except for one slip.
Shouldn't be.
Does that make sense?
Not entirely, but the thing is just that the Marina has shrunk. I mean, we used to have the L-shaped dock with, with.
Yes.
And that was where the Marina was getting filled up. I mean, I have photographs of the Marina.
Oh.
You know?
Yeah, I know.
And, and.
But we don't have that anymore.
We don't because it was, it, it wasn't winterized properly for a month. As far as the fingers were concerned, they got damaged and, and, uh. The, the L-shaped dock itself. Got damaged by the ice. So.
Which happened.
Yeah.
So the only thing I'm looking at though, like if, if we want to talk about marketing and using it more and everything, then we need to look at expansion. So you're looking at the money to expand the Marina because if you've got ninety-five percent of it full right now, plus the two slips saved that we have to, to save. One for transient, one for, then you can't bring people down here when there's nothing to bring them down to.
We, at one point in time, we're securing docks, floating docks from where the L-shaped dock was. But that never happened because I think they became into a state of disrepair. Because once again, those docks, they're probably fifteen years old. They were bought by a fetish fund type one or any.
Uh-huh.
We still have forty-two thousand dollars and we serve for more docks. Do we have any other docks or fingers that can be used?
We actually told Ron, and he's not here, but the new Super World, but we told him that he could use money for the docks, right? And then we were putting it back. But he didn't have to use it when he started repairing them. I think he got enough parts.
From. He bought the.
Yeah, that was two years ago. I believe we told him he could use that. That forty-three, we thought we'd use money out of it. We'd put money back in. It was like an ongoing in and out type of thing.
Is it ninety-five percent full or ninety-five percent of the users are local?
I would.
We can, we can look at the number text, but I think this is also.
I would. Give you a political answer. I believe the majority of the users were local and I believe the majority of the slips were rented.
Oh, I hate these answers.
I know.
You always give political answers, just so you know.
Well, it's something to look at.
It's, I think that we need to pull those numbers and just see, but certainly, um. I think having.
Again, budget wise, it's not gonna matter for wages because whether we have the full time person here or here, the budget doesn't change.
The whole budget's not gonna change.
Right.
So I would like to, I would like to see that we look at. Backing that at least a couple of days.
And do we historically raise the rental rate for the slips every year or when was the last time there was an increase in that?
It's like RIs.
It's been like RIs.
Yeah, it's been a while. Okay, because I don't want to be out there to the locals, but. Costs go up.
Well, that was one of my recommendations is that you've had a ten percent increase at the arena. So we should consider a ten percent increase of all these other services. Uh, ten percent of the Marina slips, uh, ten percent tipping fees at the dump. Um, rental, uh, arena rentals, we just did, um. Equal, equal rental prices for the all municipal buildings and services. So the, the library currently there's no charge for. Museum period has been, there's no charge for. Um, council chambers, no charge. We should associate a dollar figure with each of those for an hourly rate. Right? If you've been charged and review the arena spaces. So the, the backend cooking.
Standardize everything.
Stuff. Um.
I agree with that ten percent.
I believe there is a charge at the library and I had those for you.
Cause the first hour is not free at the library?
Yeah, and then if you go over that, there's a charge.
So. Forty dollars an hour gets.
All facilities.
All facilities.
How they utilize that much?
Yeah.
I'm, I, I agree.
No, no.
I agree with, I agree with the standardizing because they're all municipal buildings. It should be the same. I'm just curious as to how much they would be utilized. Once a month.
Yeah.
Still forty dollars an hour.
It should be discretionary as well, though, because there might be some cases where the township might want to sponsor something.
It's usually our, I think we'll say our locals.
Decision to structure at the time.
Well, if it crosses the border, all spaces are separate. I just use forty dollars an hour as a starting spot. Um. And then it gives us something to move towards.
One thing to bear in mind as well, the tourism infrastructure upgrades, when we talk about forty thousand dollars to budget towards the. The arena that we did last year, we did talk about this last year because I don't need it. Um. Years ago, we, against council, we did that and we have twenty-five thousand dollars to budget. We have to leverage forty-five percent federal, forty percent, forty-five percent federal money. Turn it into two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital upgrades down there. And that's the way we want to be thinking about this as well. Because if we're gonna allocate forty thousand dollars this year. We had this discussion last year, or to do it next year, we, we should be bearing in mind potential upgrades that we can do down there. Get into crunching numbers for potential grant application for local funding that might be available.
So what forty thousand are we getting you?
Well, we have forty thousand dollars in, in equipment, um, for.
And reserves for dogs. Yeah.
Yeah. And so, so that, that money could be directed towards, uh, tourism infrastructure, uh.
And integrate that into the stairs.
One, yeah, could be. That's the whole idea.
Integrated.
Yeah, combining things together as a large firm development project, which we looked at that doing as well. But we came together as a council, we were looking at that, previous council to, to do a plan. And we, we, we tried one out for this council. And we've been practicalizing it instead. So we're just looking at everything, you know, here, 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 rather than condensed module. And want to look at that again, with cost of that to a closer, how we're gonna spend our money into our, our facilities, you know. In a way that one developed complements another, or one need or complements another. That's what I'm saying, but, but. And also done, we, we should take this, this notion of this money, when we keep it in our budget, we have, think of how. How we're gonna find a standard. Or invest it.
Where have we decided? Sorry, completely off topic. Um, our EEO has secured some busy boats and we had discussed those. Where have we decided those will be going?
One at High Falls and one at Dutch Bog and Hill. And there's two that we hadn't decided.
But did we not talk about putting one down now?
We did, but we hadn't.
We didn't.
It didn't confirm that.
We thought we'd get the first two of first and then decide because there was walking trails and gravel and stuff that's still supposed to get done.
Yeah.
And we were looking to put in them.
So we have four.
Yeah.
So I just changed mine when we were talking about the Marina.
That might be a good idea, but we'll talk about putting one down there.
Yeah, well, since we know that the big roller motor project won't be happening for a few years.
It's hot for you.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
I have one more question. Page seventy-one, Deb, under waterworks for expenditures. We've, our budget, you know, um, fifteen hundred are actually thirty-five and. Um, we're budgeting forty-five. So that's the salaries full time and standby. Is that awful?
That's when our guys have to, uh. For what repairs are.
So all of our, all of our, uh, summer water main breaks.
Okay.
That's our. That's our combination.
Water main breaks. As I said, I look at anything that's a hundred and ten percent difference in my question. So, okay, thank you.
You know, again, cell phones first, uh, department heads. How many cell phones were you asking for? And what's the monthly rate that you're offering?
I'm asking, we were suggesting fifty dollars a month subsidy for. The office, uh, the public work superintendent has sex.
I would speak to that. I disagree with that. I think. It should be everybody or nobody. And you can, when you file your income taxes, there is a form to recoup those costs already. Um. I, I'm.
For individuals?
For individuals. If you are required by your employer to utilize your cell phone for your, because of your work, for whatever reason. Then you can recoup those costs.
I will get to send it if you have to fill out the form and give it to each person that is using their form, saying that we've authorized them.
Yes. So my question is, for the office staff, especially if they have a landline, we're not making them use their cell phone. So that form would not be applicable, correct?
No, the form would be applicable if they're utilizing their cell phone.
But they don't have to use their cell phone. But they don't have to use their cellphone. I'm I'm just, I know when I work from home, certain costs were like, that's your choice to work from home, so it's not applicable. It's my choice to use my cellphone. But I don't have to, because I could answer my landline from wherever the hours are on Monday to Friday.
Went to superintendent, he asked me morning at six thirty to say I need to bring someone else in to help pre-rule. Do I have the authority to do it? He was on the road. And I was at home. My response was, regardless of where I was, we use our our cell phones all the time for related issues. Uh whether it's the cemetery, whether it's a water break on a Sunday that we're texting to see who's coming in, who's doing what. There's never been a policy, and I'm not being critical of it, I'm just saying, over the last ten to fifteen years, it's really morphed into. You're carrying your cellphone with you all the time, and for a lot of us, half of the time, we're responding to work-related issues.
I contacted Dallas on Tuesday, March the thirteenth at nine fifty-one A M. Let's take that back. Nine fifty-eight P M on Wednesday, March twelve, over the break-in shoes down there.
Yeah.
I need to call somebody. He was there. We didn't have a public works superintendent on staff, um so. That's an example.
So again, back again, so. In days gone by, we all had radios in all the trucks.
Yeah, and that's.
A thousand dollars a piece. Our last radio system we bought, roads department didn't get on board, so now those guys have any access to radios. They only have their cellphone. So now do you have to have a cellphone with each one of those drivers?
Yeah.
So you're not just doing department heads, you're doing everybody across the board.
Which ends up being six thousand dollars a year.
Probably cheaper and they probably have better coverage out towards the slash with a cellphone than they would put the radios. At a thousand dollar a piece and however many pieces of equipment they're going to have.
And those radios get expensive, don't they?
And some of the vehicles are very hard on the radios because of constant vibrations.
Yeah.
Troublesome.
They don't bid well. There's a dead spot up there too for radios.
Right, there's a dead spot on the slash on the first road as well, whether it's cellphone or radio. Final thought on that is if we're going to do it for department heads, then for the safety of the employees also, they should have. Unless you don't make it to part of the job, I don't, how do you get around it? They don't have any other options.
Well, unless you're going to buy them all any radios. Because they have to have something. They're taking those big trucks and that equipment in. They have to have some way of of getting back in contact with somebody.
Especially if they go in the ditch or something.
Yeah.
Are we legally liable for not providing some sort of service, bud? I've never been asked that question before, so I will find out.
I'm sure that there are some packages that people seek out. They will try cost effective communications with text and data. Or voice and data.
To look at some packages.
Yeah. And so if you don't, if you get any deal of six phones, you you might find someone.
Maybe I'll first start the package.
Or let's see whichever is cheaper, like give them fifty bucks a month or or say how much the package costs.
Yeah.
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 Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Find how many staff though, because we're saying all or none, correct?
Right.
How many staff in total? Fourteen, fifteen, fifteen grand.
I have a work phone, working with some staff that cost me about fifty dollars a month.
So comparable, right? Okay, we'll take a look at that. Other questions? Concerns?
Let's take you right down to the topic above. Public relations, page twenty-five.
Yes, the donation.
So we haven't touched on any of that?
No, we haven't. Yes.
I highlighted the the North Shore Rescue Rescue, do we donate to that?
It wasn't, yes, request, it wasn't a dollar figure, I had to have two thousand dollars, right? I don't, I didn't see it there where it was specifically.
I'm going to declare a conflict with the uh Signet Curling Club. Because I'm a member. And I have to declare how your bodies. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I guess there's two ways of doing this. We can go through it line by line. Or we can say we're going to donate this much money and. Requesting first.
I think we'll go line by line. I would just like to start with the the North Shore Rescue Rescue. Um I would support a small donation to them, first off, because they do offer a lot of services that we don't have locally. I believe they get to high angle brook rescues, they do search for real release.
Yeah.
A lot of other programming that they do that we don't offer. And in the middle of the afternoon or evening, something goes south, those are the type of people that are going to have to come in to help us.
Yeah.
So I would support a five hundred or a thousand dollar donation. I don't necessarily think we need to do the full two thousand yet.
So what what do you suppose?
For the sake of starting, let's say five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Because I do think that looking at the letter we received from the government fund, I think that we, I feel kind of obligated to. Just support them in some way, as we do historically, because they're based on the letter, it doesn't look like they would remain viable. Unless we did do something as a counselor. With with the tax relief. Letters in the.
Yeah, I know.
So so I mean, we're great to provide us, again, great service to the communities, things are important, we need to have them around. And then I think without our fault, they're going to be seriously jeopardized in order to continue to run effectively. So we have to have some sense of uh.
You know, it looks like, I did check on some other thrilling clubs and their taxes are a lot higher, but they have a lot bigger club with that big addition that they have on there. For dancers, they call that they have. It makes a difference in your tax.
Oh, okay, so they're not being overtaxed. They're taxed because they have more square footage of the building than. I was trying to understand why this.
They can always, they can always, when you appeal their taxes. Well, I think we're, well, start at the top, court culture needs to stay.
Yes.
That's agreed. Yes.
Two of those dreams, we cut them in half last year. I think we should stay at that position too. They do rent our buildings.
I agree.
I would agree with that. However, uh back on November fifth, we did ask them to put together a climate action plan. We haven't heard anything back from them yet. Uh the following council meeting I'd asked, would anybody would take on Frank Mighty's bars? I haven't heard back from that. And they're still looking to win a a trade show on the island, and I think that we should ask that they seek use of our arena next.
So rents vary well too. The rent is very.
And then they do provide wonderful service, but.
Yeah.
Let's see where we can where we can go with that.
So is the twenty-five hundred already in half?
Yeah.
I think the big one would be the Frank Mighty's for sure.
Um yeah. Probably fits with the smoking operations as well, so.
Yeah, we'll get a hold of that again. The other miscellaneous donations, that, I don't think that amount has changed for quite a while, has it, Deb?
Just what I have listed below is.
Yeah.
Make up that thirteen. But that's, that thirteen thousand isn't all donations.
No, no. It does say down below what it makes up, so I think we need to leave that one.
So the numbers below are all in that thirteen five?
No, these are requests that have come in.
Okay.
But that's where it would have to come. Well, the egg society is an annual thing, I mean, it's always the five hundred.
Yeah.
I would support keeping the fixing the fee lines at fifteen hundred.
I agree. Thank you a lot.
Sorry, the student aid, that's the first regret.
Yeah.
I think they set the five hundred dollars. But keep the robotics at the three hundred dollars.
And if I keep the robotics.
At three hundred.
What did you say for North Shore Rescue?
That is the bluegrass. Uh I don't believe you'll continue to remember the past.
Is that on the, the blue one?
No, it's the one that came in after.
Okay. It's ice time. It's eight hours of ice time. Can you keep that one?
Yeah.
Ice is there.
Absolutely.
Next year is um. The agricultural um society is their big fair next year. Probably Thursday, Thursday next year to give them a little bit more, right? I think they actually asked for more this year. I'm sorry.
For the cultures that asked for extra.
Yeah. They actually have a meeting tomorrow night. So if if they're asking for more than that, then same, I know they were, they were happy with the two thousand, but if we could give them a little bit more, right? I think that's what it said.
I know.
If it's not after this, that might be mine, okay.
Yeah.
I know it's one that we tried every year that we've been counseling, we've made it from two to three, so. We'll be nice to see you there, so it would be nice to see us. Do a little bit, I know, our guys, our people from the community that do attend it and do enjoy it.
It's a, of course, a special Olympics is one of them too.
Well, we took that, we took the two thousand down to five hundred. Do you want to give them five hundred?
I'm just going to say we've done quite a few five hundred. Maybe we should look at five hundred.
I was going to start at three, but.
Well, it's for such a good cause too.
Okay, absolutely.
The bluegrass five hundred?
I'll declare it a coup. One reason for this kind of writing.
I'm I'm willing to honor their request.
Wow. What is the request?
Request is that we back there with fifty dollars per year for the next five years, from maybe six hundred, at least, well, we could do it for the next year. And then let's see what what kind of fires over the next year, so maybe we can honor it for the year, to start and we can address it again next year.
So we did stop that last year, right?
Yeah, but then but then I read the content of their letter. And now we're there in significant need. So so if we if we went with one year on a one-year, year-to-year basis right now, we'll we'll see where they stand next year. In the case we've we've uh been given as a bad day for the next year, this following year, and then we'll be able to determine more in the near to come.
So this is the private club versus a service club in the community, correct?
Correct.
So this is basically the same as the doctor. The private.
It's a private, yeah. What do you think, Jen?
I agree, it's a private club, but I also think that it gives us something to believe in at one and. It's, it is unfortunate that they are in the position they're in. I personally would like to see them appeal uh to MPAC. I would like to see them. You know, utilizing some of their space. We, you know, I don't know what their fee structure is or anything like that, but it seems to me that with that big a space, they could be utilizing it perhaps. To make more income from it, so they could afford their taxes, but I would agree with Rob for one year only. To see if that'll give them time to do an appeal, to do the things that they need to be doing. And if we can support them in that for one year and then next year we'll get it again.
I would take both of those and say, yes, so let's let's do a two thousand dollar reduction for this year only. And supply them with the letter stating that we support and assist them when we're. Uh reaching out to MPAC for reassessing them, though. We don't have it for the one year. So their actual tax would be the fifty-six oh one, it's going to be eighty-six oh one. Sixty, so two thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, then you can talk, right? Yeah. So everybody's okay with that for this year?
And they don't have a question. Six hundred one dollars is quite less helping.
And you're taking two thousand dollars off their taxes. That's that's.
Would you say how much money would they sell that they don't have to work? We're sitting right now with a balance sheet at the, as of September the eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
Yeah, so bear in mind, I would like to honor their request. It's, we're only talking another six hundred dollars, which is splitting here, just really, and by by putting in the notion of reexamining them another year. I think we're getting a good council to help come out, and they do do. Fire lots of working bee in some in with. You know. On a ongoing basis, with different functions that they put on.
So you would take um thirty-six hundred off the tax?
Correct.
So it's sixteen hundred dollars instead, we would be. Not six hundred.
Yeah.
If we're subsidizing it, thirty-six hundred and one dollar is what it would be.
Instead of two thousand.
For this year, yes.
I'd like to see the need line, the club a little bit more too. I. I like having the club in town. I feel it's good for people. It's. It's good exercise, get people out, but. Maybe, and and I don't know what they charge for students or anything, but maybe they need to look at raising them, but maybe, like, I don't know. Because I don't know anything about it. So I would like to see them try and get um more revenue into their club.
I think they've been trying to get new members and that sort of thing. I think that we've got a lot of new people to our community. Uh that maybe don't even know what curling is or, you know, those sorts of things. Um I'd like to support them the best way we can. Um I'm I'm in agreement with five thousand for one year.
Okay. Okay. That's going to have, that's going to have that budget a little bit. Okay.
With all that, stay within the the eighteen or the thirteen.
Does all that stay within the, the eighteen, or the thirteen five?
No.
I think it does, Brendan.
Does it?
Yeah.
Okay. It does, the thirteen five covered.
Thirteen five.
It, it covers everything in the bottom, it doesn't cover everything here.
Thirteen five includes flowers sent to funerals, things like that, that the.
New businesses.
Yeah.
Uh, staff bonuses, that type of thing. That's the thirteen five, it's got nothing to do with the rest of the donations.
Those donations come out of that thirteen, but that's going to cover everything.
Oh, okay. All these other donations come out of the thirteen?
Will come in about thirteen.
Okay.
Plus the, all these extras, those, uh, staff bonus, Christmas bonuses, and the flowers for street banners and all that stuff.
That's a thirteen five.
That's, and the donations.
And the donation, gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
So we look like we're looking at a budget in between.
Anything else you want to, um, get more information on or discuss? We can come back again? Do you have anything else, Brian? No?
Nope, the, uh, the circular contracts obviously started today.
Yes.
Let him hopefully give us fifty thousand dollars. Same.
Hopefully.
But that won't change our budget, budget divisions, because we can't count on it yet, because we don't know where our number is going to be till we're through it, yeah.
Okay. We keep having camera time. Very quickly.
Goodbye, come for Cooper, second by Council of Guard, then in accordance with section two O M D, the risk act is meant to pass, so proceeds to a closed session at eight thirty five. Uh, to attend matters pertaining to recovery resources update. Fellas in favor? That's Carrie.